Evening, everybody. The joint meeting of the General Gov Subcommittee and Town Council Wednesday, January 18th, 2023. It is now 6:40 PM. Here in the Rice Conference Room. Call order. Roll call. We have Ms. Clements.
Present.
Michelle.
Present.
Councilor Ryan. Councilor Steve.
Absent.
And I'll fill in for the Chair. And I am present.
Jasmine's not here.
What do we got?
Jasmine's on with me.
Councilor Reeves is absent. All right. So item number three, Senator Sebden of Gov Subcommittee Minutes, January 3rd, 2023.
So.
Thank you.
But we can have discussion?
Yeah, absolutely, discussion.
Okay. I do not like number eight on the Haidexter donation. It says, Ms. Clement said she wasn't going to abstain because she has no say in the foundation's donations. That's not what I said. I said because the donation was to the entire community and not to me personally in any way of form, so therefore it was a donation to the communities. And that I'm not a voting member of the committee.
You did say that.
I'm not a voting member of the committee. I would never say that conversations I have might be influential in some way, right? On behalf of the town, you know? That's true. I agree.
I can confirm that's what she said.
Got it?
So I would like that changed.
You got it. I put that in there as well. I know it's on the recording. Councilor Steve's here as well. I'd like that changed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Depending on other.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
As amended.
As amended. Opposed? All right. So item number four, discuss the Southridge Retirement Board's regular basis increase to fiscal year 23, COLA base from 3% to 5% effective July 1st, 2022. I'm asking the Motion of Council for acceptance. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion. And yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for a point of order from my own clarification. So how does this work, given that the sitting committee doesn't have a form? How does that work?
So I'm an ex officio, so I can.
You are?
Yes.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you. So just, we want to call the committee's attention to the fact that the agenda item is actually incorrect. The word "base" should not be there. It is, it just should say FY23 COLA from 3% to 5% effective July 1, 2022.
Okay. I scratched that out. And I'll make sure that when it goes up, that the base is taken out.
Thank you.
Can I just say something? Your Chair. We have 209 members that this would affect. We're probably looking at about $28. I would like to see the board support this to be before council. We, obviously, it's difficult times for everybody at this point. We have about an 8% increase. And then, excuse me, 98% increase. Oh, my goodness. 8%. Overall, how much everything is cost beyond for the people?
Expenses. Oh, the cost of living?
Yeah. Well, it's not really cost of living.
But their expenses have gone up.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So health insurance has gone up, and I just feel that this should be something that we be able to do for them at a low cost.
This approval would be for just the one-year period fiscal '23 from July 1, 22 to June 30, '23. This was an outside section of this year's state budget that was amended by prior committee's approval by Governor Baker at the request of the MMA. There were certain safeguards that he, the MMA wanted to put in it, and this is one of them. Because each year, the retirement board has the ability to grant a COLA up to 3%. This is above and beyond that. This is an additional 2% on top of that. We have already approved a COLA July 1, '22, 3%. So this is an additional 2 we're asking for, and it does require local approval, which in a town like Southbridge without formal government, that means council.
Thank you.
It was 8% inflation, so.
We got it in there.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay. So you said you have 209 members. It's about $28 per member for the year?
No, per month. It's checked, $23.33. Mr. Marketti, correct? 23.33? 28.33?
She said it's 28, I think.
Yeah. Okay. Per person per month?
So that's a conservative estimate because we have 209 retirees. And thanks to the council for their approval of the increase to our COLA base, it was 12, it is now 14. But some of our members or beneficiaries, survivors, don't even make a $14,000 pension every year. So that's a conservative number.
Right. I'm just trying to get the ultimate number. So that's, it's per month increase of approximately $28 per member?
It's $280 annually.
Annually, per member. That's 200 times 209.
For those members that make actually 14, that their gross pension is $14,000.
Right.
So maximum amount of $60,000.
Right. Because originally I was going to set it now when they just said it that way. Okay. So that's just, you know, the total. It's nice to say it one way, but the reality is. Just need to make sure.
Anything else?
Now, I guess, so it's for this year, and we know things have changed, economy and all that. But I wouldn't want to see it as an assumed standard going forward. Do you know what I'm saying? 3% is the max, or whatever you're saying. This is an additional thing. Hopefully, there's an understanding that it's not like, oh, well, every year we'll do 5%. Or every, well, we did 5 last year. We must be able to do 5. Now let's do 7.
It's no change to Chapter 269 of the Acts of '22. If that's not amended, we would need to come back to council.
Anything above?
To each year.
Each year.
To approve that. Unless there's a change to the statute.
Right. What's the statute allow, though? Isn't it 3?
The statute, Section 103 of Chapter 32 allows 3%. The retirement board, without the approval, the local approval.
Right, it's 3%.
It's 3%. If we want to go any higher than that, 269 of the Acts of '22 require us to come to council.
Okay. So if that changes, then potentially you could go higher without coming to council. You could.
I don't see.
Yeah.
I mean, with the, you know, MMA has a strong. The governor.
Influence?
The governor was, yeah, thank you. Influence on the governor. I don't think that's going to change.
Okay.
Even with the changing governor, I don't think that's going to change, so.
Okay. Just, it's one of those things that people listening, you know, it's, well, geez, what happens next year? Then they'll just anticipate that we're going to roll over for more or more. I mean, I don't know. You know, honestly, it has to be available.
And for the public's information, so a retiree from Southbridge making $14,000 a year, again, it doesn't matter if their pension is $50,000. They're only getting the COLA on the $14,000.
Okay.
So a retiree right now is 400, with the 3%, it's $180 increase for this year. We're asking you to go up to 700, and that's annually.
Right.
Can I clarify? You say annually. Is this just taking it from FY23 down to FY24? Just from July to next June?
To June 30th, correct. We're asking, right. So currently, the retirement board has already authorized the $180 increase, and our retirees are receiving that. We're asking for it to go up to 700, which is an additional $280.
That's max, right?
Yes.
So, okay. Not everybody gets that, right?
No. We have some retirees who don't even, their pension isn't even $14,000.
Okay.
Let's get things both clarification. I mean, you know, sometimes we go through items and we really don't know.
Michelle, do you have anything?
No, just my standard statement that my pension does not conform the town. My healthcare does, but not my pension.
Very well, thank you.
Something to consider is the fact that Social Security gave over an 8% increase on a full amount of Social Security. And for retirees, it's based on the $14,000. Something a lot of people don't understand, you know, is that public employees such as in Southbridge, a lot of them don't get Social Security because they get affected by the whip and the G, GOA, or whatever. And those have been for years being promised that they're allowed. So some of these people, they don't get Social Security, and they're not Medicare eligible. So they end up being on a town insurance plan. And insurance went up, I forget how much. Amedex was not substantially, but it went up. And as a retiree, you don't get the benefit that a working employee gets. Their working employee, I believe, is 70, a 70, 30 split, in 80, 20, I'm not sure.
Right.
Where it's 50/50 for the town employee. So it's just something to consider, you know, the $14,000 is based on $14,000. Social Security is based on the full amount. So if you were making $14,000 on Social Security, it would be 8.7, I think, actually. So it's something to consider for the employees, and it is a one-year thing. And I believe it's because of the pandemic and the cost of living that has, it's too bad they didn't go to 8.7 like the Social Security did, but 5% is better than.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan, head.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Three of you, guys. We did talk about this earlier. So the way I look at it is, is $14,000. So I'm going back now. $14,000 times 3%.
2%. There's a difference in.
Hang on, hold on.
Okay.
So let me finish. It's $420. $14,000 times 5% is $700. Minus 420 is 280. Minus 12 is 23. Now. Last May, let me go over this. We changed the base from 12 to 14, which was only a $60 increase difference. It was a $60 difference, and it was a lot of talk about how this was going to make our liability go up to, I think it was 5.2 million, something like that, and was going to stay there for a long time before it dropped. So my question is, what's the difference between this, which is a $280 difference, and back then it was only a $60? Because it's only one year? Is that right?
Correct. This is a one-year period. It's not permanent. Your increase to the base was permanent.
Okay.
And I wish Ms. Hanwa was here. Hanwa was here because we like to debate this point, but I guess I could always debate it with Mr. Mahal. But we have a difference in looking at the presentation of that information. You know, the town of Southbridge is still getting to that point of being fully funded. It's just that your decrease would have been less. You're still decreasing significantly your appropriation in those outer years. It's just the decrease is a little less in granting our retirees these types of increases that we're coming to you, asking you for. And I mean, I think our retirees definitely worked it after three years. So.
So this, this state law was changed from 3 to 5%, correct?
No. So the Chapter 32, Section 103 allows for, that is the 3%, up to 3%. The local system would see approval of the retirement board can grant that. This is an outside section of the state budget this year. It's Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022. This allowed for going from 3 to up to 5 with the approval of the local legislative body, the local authority. So here in Southbridge, that's the council.
And what is the base for the COLA increase?
$14,000.
I saw on the state website that this is up to, I'm just telling you what they're saying.
No, no.
Up to 13,000.
And you're correct, because the state's base is 13. I believe, Michelle, I don't know if you're aware what MTRS is, but MTRS has, their base is something else. So each system, their local approving body can bring it up to $18,000.
Good question.
Correct. So anywhere from 12 to 18. And different systems have different bases. Here in Southbridge, because you guys approved it, we thank you very much for that. We're at 14 now.
Okay. And then this is retroactive to?
July 1st.
All right. Okay.
Any other discussion on this? I had two questions for you. Real quick, the payments. Wondered, do they go by monthly? I know when we received a COLA increase for some of my clients, it was, I think, monthly at the time because they started so late in fiscal year.
You guys got a lump sum for the first six months of the year. You did your 700. Are you talking about your?
39 bucks a month.
Your veterans?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was $79 a month for that first half of the year, and then it was in the base after that. They did a lump sum. You did a lump sum.
Right.
Yeah. And then it's $79 every month after.
Is that how it's going to work here?
No. So here, now, this is different. So here, what we're going to do is, if it is approved, once it's approved by, hopefully by council, our administrator will then add it to the payroll.
Okay.
For the month, you know, if it happens to be February, or we'll add it to that payroll. It will be retroactive back to July 1st and then go forward from there a month.
Thank you. Another question. I know George brought this up. I did think that they were, town employees did receive some type of Social Security, very minimal, but I did believe that they do receive some.
It's on an individualized basis. So it depends on your specific situation. I'll use myself for an example. I am not eligible for Social Security whatsoever because I started right here in this building when I was 18 years old. Never done anything else. So I only have my pension. I am Medicare eligible because I started after April 12th of 1986. I started in December of that year. So I am Medicare eligible. However, those employees who started prior to that did not contribute to Medicare, so they're not Medicare eligible. Again, as George alluded to about the government pension offset and also the WEP, those are things that do affect public employees for whatever reason, trying to get that repealed. But in Massachusetts, that is the case. So an individual will go in, and when they apply for their Social Security, and there is usually a 2/3 offset to their Social Security, even though they're eligible for it because they're collecting a pension, their full pension from the town of Southbridge, they're not eligible for their full Social Security.
Thank you so much for the explanation.
It's like my Social Security is $371, and I paid my whole life into Social Security. We're one of seven states that get penalized because we have a pension, a pension, by the way, that we pay for.
Fully funded by ourselves.
We pay for it.
Right.
The town pays a share, and the employee pays.
Okay, thank you. Any other? No, thank you. Any other discussion? Councilor Reeves?
I'm sorry, I came in late, so you might have already answered this question. So currently, the base is $14,000, you said? And what would the increase make that to?
$280 a year.
He wasn't here for the change in the agenda, maybe change in the agenda.
Oh, we took out the word base.
Yeah, it's the word base.
Yeah. That should have been there.
So it's just a percentage. But the base stays.
$14,000.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? That's it. All right. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
You count.
Thank you. Well, I'm just, I mean, yeah, I guess it depends on who was here for the full agenda and whether they.
I understand.
Yeah, that's who's safe.
Well, it's okay. It's going to go for the positive. Yeah, and I put the time down.
And again, you just have to say it to them. This is nice. We think, thank you for, Pam, you're right with your information, as usual. You're right on top of things.
Councilor Steve, you want to take over from here?
If you want to keep going, you can.
Absolutely not.
Let the record indicate.
Yeah. Oh, it's recorded. All right. You got number five from here?
Number five is a presentation from John Marrop of Good Energy on electricity aggregation aggregation. And Mr. Marrop is right here. I did pass on his presentation by email to everybody that has used the Congress as well as well.
I'll just, I'll just give it.
And if anybody else wants emails, I can send it to you.
Who's? Jasmine.
Is that the same one?
I think it's Jasmine.
Oh, Councilor.
Oh, I'm very mindful. Thank you. I'll be right. Thank you, actually. Okay.
Oh, it's a problem. I think you were.
Hope you're careful.
At home. If you have extras, yeah, sure. My God, it's just cooking. I don't know. This is what we were talking about about so many days.
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, thank you for letting me come before you tonight to give you a short presentation on community electricity aggregation. I've given you a short presentation. The first page of that is essentially our Massachusetts customer-facing team. We're backed by 40 professionals, analytical, administrative, and customer service personnel. Essentially, I would be working with this account for renewable energy. We work closely with Green Energy Consumers Alliance, who are the gold standard here in Massachusetts for essentially sourcing renewable energy certificates. That's Massachusetts Class 1 renewable energy certificates for whatever the town wants to do regarding additional renewable energy. We also are closely associated with Sustainable Energy Advantage. They are, again, another very strategically important firm here in New England. They consult with the Department of Public Utilities, and we look to them for their knowledge on renewable energy markets. On that next page, Good Energy is a national company. Here in Massachusetts, we have 59 clients. We have clients in every state that has municipal aggregation. And essentially, right now, our mass CEA aggregation is the largest of its kind in the country. Essentially, it started out here in Massachusetts with 18 municipalities, has worked up to 25. And as I say, based on the amount of energy it uses, is the largest in the country of its kind. On that next page, gives you a summary of our active aggregations here in Massachusetts. Are DPU plans approved? And essentially, those plans, we just arranged a launch for those plans in March, so those seven are going to go into active very shortly. We have plans pending in with DPU, three plans, and we have plans in development, four. And we're probably speaking with another eight municipalities that are interested in aggregation at this point. On that next slide, essentially, the way aggregation has come about here in Massachusetts, and in the late 1990s, Massachusetts was the first state in the country to develop a municipal aggregation law. And most successful laws in the country are based on the Massachusetts aggregation law. And essentially, what it does, when deregulation came about in the late 1990s, it gave residents and businesses a choice of either going with a local utility or having to choose their own electricity supplier. And essentially, what aggregation does, it gives more competitive electricity choices, longer-term, stable electricity rates. Essentially, most of our contracts are in the two-to-three-year range. As you know, the utilities change their rates every six months. And again, they go out to bid whether the market is good or not, and sometimes that's to the great disadvantage of the basic service customers. Right now, you can see that with the National Grid that's at 33.891 a kilowatt hour and Eversource that's at 25.649. So from all of our aggregations, we are getting phone calls from those residents who are not in the aggregation wanting to know how to get in the aggregation. And again, another purpose of aggregation is to lower utility rates, and we also have to make sure we put the caveat in there that although that's our objective, we can't always guarantee that. All right? That is a requirement of the Department of Public Utilities, that we put that disclaimer in there all the time, even though historically speaking, our aggregations have been very successful. Again, what it does, it gives those communities that want more renewable energy in their options, gives them the advantage to do that, to put more energy, renewable energy in the mix. And again, another thing this does, normally, when we come into a community, those retail suppliers, sometimes they're unscrupulous, they will cease from marketing in the community because they know there's an aggregation, and they know that 80 to 85% of the people in that community are usually in the aggregation. In that next slide, it just indicates that the relationship with National Grid, they still, customers still receive one bill. The only thing that changes on that bill is the name of the supplier and the rate. National Grid takes care of everything. They take care of the billing, they take care of the infrastructure, they care of any outages. They service the entire account. The only thing that's different, the name of the supplier and the rate. And again, one thing that some people are nervous about is that if I go with the aggregation, is National Grid going to give me less service than if I was on the basic service? And that's not at all. National Grid, since the late 1990s, since deregulation, makes no money on the supply. They only pass through the supply. So they don't care where the supply comes from. All right? So they're very neutral in terms of who is actually providing the electricity.
But they're also a supplier too, right?
They are. They are the supplier to basic service customers, but again, they go out to, they go out to bid, they have no generation facilities. They're just, that's just a pass-through. And again, they make no money on that pass-through. Many of the calls we're getting now from customers who are basically on, who are on that basic service, they're saying, boy, they must be making a lot of money on 33 cents. Well, unfortunately, they're not making any money on that. That's just the pass-through. And unfortunately, what happened with both National Grid and Eversource in this last round of their adjustments, they went out in the market that was a very bad market. Okay? DPU no longer is concerned about the rate. They used to control the rate before deregulation, but now the only thing they're concerned about is, was the process to get the rate correct? Was it within the bounds of the law? That's the only thing they look for. And essentially, they do not control the rate anymore. They used to have some say in that rate before deregulation. On that next slide, you can see the history of our aggregation, which is the mass CEA aggregation, which is 25 communities. And I just put this in here because it shows how successful aggregation has been. And I just put this in here because it shows how successful aggregation has been. You can see in 2020 and 2021 in the spring, their adjustments were less than the aggregation. And you know what happened in 2020 and 2021? You had a significant decrease in commercial use of energy because of the COVID situation. So they were able to get very good bids for those summer adjustments. Now, you have the winter adjustment here at 33.891. That is for 50% of one year's load. So in the next adjustment, that 33.891 is going to be in there for half that load, which means if they get a 10% rate on their next bid, that'll still mean 44 cents divided by two, 22 cents. They could have, they could very easily have a 22 cent rate for their summer adjustment. So it's, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's what's happening with National Grid. This next slide just goes through the basic and major steps of the process that we do for the town, moving through from the start. And essentially, what it starts with here, since you have a town council, it starts with a town council vote to say, yes, we want to go ahead with aggregation. Then a draft plan is put together. We do that. And again, we can't do anything without the approval of the Department of Public Utilities. So every time we do something, we have to go to them and say, is this okay? All right? So it's not like we're out here on our own. And again, through every step of this process, the Department of Public Utilities is involved with some sort of approval. As the consultant, we do all the work, we do all the heavy lifting. The only thing needed by the town is decisions at certain points in the process. There's no out-of-pocket expense for the town. We're paid through the competitive supplier at a rate of one mil per kilowatt hour. That's one-tenth of a penny per kilowatt hour. And again, that doesn't start until we're flowing power, which comes way at the end of this process. So through this whole process, we don't get paid. We only get paid when it goes out to launch. So as you can see, you've got the review and approval process, you've got the regulatory process, the public outreach and launch. And again, a lot of this, what is needed for this program is public outreach and education. We do a lot of that to let everybody in town know what's going on. And as we get toward launch, we intensify that tremendously. So that during that period of what's known as the customer notification period, which is 30 days long, everyone on basic service gets a customer notification letter. They get instructions that if they want to stay in the program, they don't have to do anything. They can just, they will be automatically enrolled. Or if they want to opt-out, for whatever reason, they get also with that letter, an opt-out card and an opt-out envelope. They just sign it, put it in the mail, goes to the supplier, and they are not involved in the program. Anyone who has chosen a supplier, in other words, a third-party supplier, at that point in time, at the point of time of launch, we cannot contact them. They have already chosen a third-party supplier, so we no longer have their contact information. If at some point, they want to come into the program, they can do that. We set up a website that has an enrollment form, and they can enroll in the program. At any time, anyone can get out of the program without penalty or termination fees. So it's kind of, it's kind of a win-win situation. As we get closer to the bid time, we have, we get indicative pricing from suppliers. We go out to bid for 12, 18, 24, 30, 36 months from three, maybe four suppliers that are national suppliers, big companies. The town decides which term and price is best for the town. And once that's decided, we go ahead with the launch and we go with that public outreach and education program. Once it's in place, after that 30-day period of customer notification and opt-out, we manage and monitor program for the length of the term.
Usually, what's the start time, like from start to finish? Like, what are you looking at for time-wise to have something like this?
Start time for?
From council approval to it actually launching.
Okay, that's a good question.
You know, and I mean, rough estimate.
We recently had plans approved that were with DPU for over two years. DPU has been getting such negative press from that, that they are talking about maybe putting something in place that approves things much faster. When we originally started with our mass CEA program and our plans went through the DPU, they went through in an average of 73 days, two and a half months. Why it's taken so long? Because you have 175 communities that have approved plans. These documents have been perfected by the DPU through the last six, seven years. Why it's taken so long? I can't give you an answer to that, okay? But there was a, there was an amendment to the budget proposal, this past budget, that was to give DPU 180 days to approve municipal aggregation plan. If it wasn't approved, it would be automatically approved. That didn't get into the final version, but there are legislators that want to get that in somehow again. I think we're going to be, a realistic answer might be a year from the start. From the start, you have a council vote to the time you launch. You're probably talking about a year. And again, you know, we can go as fast as the DPU allows us to go. It's all a regulatory process, and it's a situation that sometimes is slower than it should be. But again, we've been through this so many times, not only in Massachusetts, but in every other state that allows municipal aggregation. We're professionals at it, we know how to do this. The only thing that holds us back is the regulatory bodies. All right? So again, and again, it's important to note that there's very little excess work to do on the town's part. There are decisions to make at certain points in the process. We do all the heavy lifting, and again, we do this all the time. So it's, you know, it's something that we're used to, all right? And we're good at. But again, it's all in the hands of the Department of Public Utilities. All right? We can't, we can't do anything without them approving it.
Follow-up on that timing. So you keep saying, you know, you're doing this a long time, and you mentioned to other states. So is, a couple of things, is Massachusetts then an anomaly? Do they take, on average, longer than other states, the DPU? Or are these things you're trying not to say because it's politically incorrect?
There are some states where it takes two weeks.
Right.
Okay. Different process, whatever, okay? Not the process that we have. We have, when we first started out, the plans were about 100 pages long. Now, they're going up to almost 400 pages with all kinds of stuff in there.
Is it consumer protection stuff, or do you think, or is it just?
Some of it is, some of it is consumer protection, but some of it is just stuff.
Okay, so are there others? I mean, I'm going to ask, this is, you're here doing this, are there others like you?
There are three firms in Massachusetts that do this in Massachusetts. There's Good Energy, Colonial Power, and Peregrine Energy. Okay? We are the best, obviously.
Of course, of course. And I know you do Charlton because my father's saying, oh, I want to get on that constellation. I want to do this, do this. And I look at his bill, his bill says .1 or whatever. And I'm like, you're already, you're already on something. You already have a good rate. You're not 33.
Yeah, before their renewal in December, they were .10316.
So it was interesting, because I remember getting a letter. I remember saying, oh, he's just staying with his electric, whatever. I knew Charlton was doing something, I didn't pay attention to it until I saw the aggregation.
We're getting a lot of calls from residents in Charlton who are, who stayed on the basic service are now saying, oh, wait, my bill is now 33.891. Why aren't, why am I not on the plan?
Right, because you opted out, yeah. Okay.
Can they opt back in after they opt out? Or is there a wait period? If somebody opts out, can they get back in without a wait period? Are you up for?
They can, they can get back in, yes.
So there's no fees and there's opt-in, opt-out option? Unlike some of these ones that tie up for two years or three years or?
You can, you can get out anytime you want without penalties or termination fees.
So can you get out on a tie and then jump back in when it's all like that?
Well, it used to be, it used to be that the suppliers didn't mind that much. And we basically had an informal agreement with suppliers. If somebody got out and they wanted to get back in, they could come back in at the aggregation rate. Now, what's happening is that they're saying, well, wait a second. People opted out, and now they're gaming the system, so to speak, okay? We're only going to let them back in at a market rate. It may not be as high as the utility rate, but it may be a market rate for the supplier. Again, that doesn't happen a lot because basically, aside from a couple of very short periods of time when National Grid and Eversource were slightly below our aggregation rates, people didn't mind because they knew during the winter there'd be a significant difference. Okay? So we don't have a lot of that. But essentially, that's in what's known as the electricity services agreement that the town would sign with the supplier. Because what the supplier doesn't want, okay? And basically, you know, when we do an aggregation, a supplier knows they're going to get between 80 and 85% of the load. Okay? So they know what they're bidding on. So they can give us a pretty good rate. What they don't want to see is a whole bunch of people coming in and out because now, they bought a certain amount of electricity for a certain amount of time, or they've basically allocated some of their generation for a certain amount of time. They don't want those fluctuations, they want stability.
So do you know now how many households in Southbridge have a separate supplier?
No, we don't because we haven't gotten permission from Southbridge to get that information. Okay? One of the steps is that we would ask the town to give us authorization to go to National Grid to say, hey, give us the data so we can tell who's who here.
Because I work in the clerk's office, and we get, we're getting all kinds of calls to, how can they join? You know, because our neighboring town's doing that. That's why I brought that up to Michael. But yeah, I think it's something we need to know.
We are, we are getting barraged with phone calls and emails. You know, in a normal period, we'd get four, six calls a week, emails, calls. Now, we're getting 20 to 30 a day because we've got, we've got people who are saying, people are calling up saying, I can't pay this electric bill. I don't know how I'm going to pay this bill. I'm on a fixed income. How am I going to pay this bill? So, yeah, it's tough times for people right now.
Well, I am one of those that has a supplier outside.
I just changed because of that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we're getting a lot of calls from people who's, who had third-party suppliers, who had a good rate, and all of a sudden, now they're saying, wait a second, they want to put me up in the mid-20s. They want to renew me, but it's going to be in the mid-20s. So, you know, we're, and actually, this is really funny, okay? National Grid and Eversource are actually telling people to call us because they don't want to hear the complaints about the high rate. Okay? So they're saying, hey, you know what? You know where you can get a lower rate? They're either telling them, go to energieswitchma.com, you know about their website, right? Or they're giving them our number in towns where we have the aggregations. It's like wild. They're actually driving customers to us. Counselor.
I'm one of these residents who are on fixed income. My electricity, though, has gone through the line. It is very difficult to pay the bill. I think this is a whole bringer. I think we should vote for it, bring it up to the council, vote for it. Because what's the harm of giving it a try? If it turns out we don't want it any year, I don't think there's any penalty clause. So I have somebody in favor of this, let's give them a try.
There's absolutely no penalty for the town. And when I go see clients that we have now in the mass CEA aggregation we have, that it's a 10, 4, 7 through the end of next year, they want to kiss my ring. Really. Because, you know, these are towns that their residents are saying, hey, I've got 33 cents, I've got 25 cents.
That's a whole bringer.
Ma'am?
I have a question, and this is totally not a deal breaker. I'm all for aggregation, as Gus knows. I'm just wondering, this is just a question. It says, National Grid is neutral concerning the electric supplier.
Yes.
Does aggregation have anything to do with the supplier? And the reason I'm asking this is because we had gotten a thing in the mail several years ago about a supplier in Arizona, in the state of Arizona, offering to suppliers with energy. Well, that's great, it was cheaper, but we're not anywhere near Arizona, so we have no idea what's happening to their weather, you know, whatever. Where is this energy? Is it coming from a place that, like, it could be hit by a tornado or a hurricane or something? And then we'll be like, well, you got a good deal, but sorry.
You got a good deal, but you don't have anything?
What this means is basically that National Grid doesn't care where the electricity comes from. Okay? Now, there are two things that happen in the electricity market. There's the operational end, and there's the financial end. Okay? Essentially, when you're in, when you sign a contract with a supplier, okay? Some of these suppliers will bring energy into the New England grid. Some of them won't, okay? They're just selling a financial asset, okay? But the energy is always here because the New England ISO runs the New England grid. They always provide the electricity, okay? No matter, no matter who your quote supplier is, they're always going to supply the electricity. Behind the scenes, there's this financial transaction where some people, some suppliers have said, yeah, my bid is 10 cents for this amount of electricity. My bid is 15 cents, okay? And that's the way it shakes out behind the scenes, okay? Some people are very worried about the fact that, well, if I go with ABC or Good Energy or the aggregation, will I ever have a situation where I won't have electricity? That'll never happen because the electricity is always distributed by the grid, okay? The New England ISO, okay, has a control room down in Holyoke that looks like NASA, okay? Because they have to match supply with demand, okay? Because there's no such thing as storing electricity right now efficiently. So they know by the weather, by what's going on, by who's generating, who's not generating. So they know by the weather, by what's going on, uh, by who's generating, who's not generating, how they have to balance that generation with demand. So supply and demand situations. If I look right now at their, at what they're doing, okay, they're supplying the grid with energy at about twenty-nine dollars a megawatt, okay? And essentially, their demand chart looks like this, okay? They, they are basically, okay, they, they are tracking demand and supply, okay?
Yeah, saying close, those lines are close together.
What about like brownouts, when there's, when there is no electricity?
Well, that's what happens when there's, when there's an imbalance between supply and demand.
Yeah.
Okay? Fortunately, the, the, the grid here in Massachusetts, the ISO, they do a great job. They do a great job at basically saying, okay, what, what elements, what generators do I have to bring online to make sure I have enough demand? And we always have enough capacity here in Massachusetts and the rest of the New England grid to supply what we have. The debacle that happened in Texas a couple of years ago, okay, is totally because Texas is an isolated grid. They do not bring in any resources from any neighboring grids, all right? Massachusetts, we can bring in power from Canada, New York, Long Island, okay? And we can give them power if we, if we have, if we're generating too much. So we have a totally different situation. Michael?
I've worked with some of the others that you mentioned in previous communities, and it may be of interest here, sometimes you're able to offer more than one option for aggregation. For those who are more concerned about the environment, will you be able to offer that here? Sometimes it's a fifty-fifty, sometimes it's a hundred percent green in addition to the regular low cost.
What, what we typically do right now in our plans, we usually have three options, okay? The first option is a standard option, okay? And the, and what happens with the towns is they can, they can choose how much additional renewable energy they want in that standard option, okay? Right now, most of our, our towns are doing like either five or ten percent additional, not a lot, okay? But when you, when you multiply that by the whole town, putting additional five or ten percent in, that's a lot, okay? Then from there, you can go down to basic, which is the same amount of renewable energy as required by the Commonwealth. Or you can go up to a hundred percent for those people who are really interested in going full bore with, with their renewable energy. So we always have multiple options, and again, that's the town's choice, that's how, how they wanna do that. Counselor?
So it's, it takes me a while to kind of understand all of it. So, um, so you would be putting together the aggregation plan?
Right, with, with the guidance of, of the town.
Right. And then, when it's, when it is approved by DPU, then would you also be one of the, the suppliers putting in a bid?
No, we're, we're not, we're not a supplier. We're total, we're consultants, we're not suppliers.
So you would be consulting on the plan?
We're not connected to suppliers in any way. We don't own suppliers, we're not owned by suppliers, we're not influenced by suppliers. 'Cause essentially, we have to be objective. And we've gotta sit on your side of the table, okay? Because essentially, we wanna get the best rate for the town that we can. Because essentially, that's the way we do well. Because we want, we don't want you for a customer for two or three years. We want you to be a customer for twenty or thirty years. So we have to do a good job. And again, uh, I, I was just, I met with the town this afternoon, and one of the questions was, uh, well, what if we don't like the bid? Well, you know, most of the time, we're not gonna go out to bid unless we know we can get you a good bid. And we have actually held towns off as much as eighteen months because it wasn't a good time to bid, okay? We wanna get you the best rate in the best market we can. Like, for instance, um, I gave you a sheet of our recent, our recent renewals and our launches. These renewals that took place in November and December were put out to bid last April. We went out to bid last April with these towns. And here was the situation where all of these towns had contracts in place between ten and eleven cents. And we had to tell them, hey, you know what? We have bids between fourteen and sixteen cents. And we had to convince them that those were good rates, okay? That was a tough thing to do because they had ten or eleven. And we said to them, look, this doesn't look good right now, okay? But at the end of the year, this is gonna look great. Now, the reason we could do that is because we have analysts that are in this market every day. Because not only do we do aggregation, but we do a large amount of commercial and industrial client business. So we're renewing new clients every day in the market for industrial and commercial accounts. So we have analysts in the market every day. Our analysts told us last February, hey, you know what? Get your aggregations renewed in the next month or two. Because by the end of the year, things are gonna get bad. Now, for us, for us to do, to do this, get these renewal prices, which were fifty percent above where our clients were, and yet they trusted us. And now they're saying, wow, you guys are great. Well, you know, we were great because we knew, our analysts are in the market and they knew what was coming, okay? It was, it was kind of tough to convince these guys that, hey, you know, these are gonna be good rates at the end of the year. But now they're very happy that, that they all accepted those bids.
What does it cost our community for your services to do all of that?
Nothing. We're, we're paid one mil per kilowatt hour through the competitive supplier, whoever wins the bid. And essentially, so there's no out-of-pocket expense to the town. Again, the only thing that the town does is make decisions along the way.
What's happening to the people who are starting right now with the, with the thirty-three? What, what kinds of offers are you giving them? Or just telling them to hold on?
We, we have, we have aggregations in place in forty-five towns that are active right now.
All right.
Okay, so in those towns, anybody who has gotten that thirty-three rate who is still in the basic service can come into the aggregation.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, if you're going out, say, our contract was, our three years were up, and you were going out to bid for us for another three years.
Right.
Right now, what happens to us right now? Do we get stuck with the thirty-three for the next three years?
No, no, the contract would be renewed. You would have, you would have a contract that ends, right? And we, before that contract ends, we go out for renewal that, that's coterminous, that, that starts when that, that contract ends.
But what would the, what, what would our numbers be?
Well, you never know, it depends on the bid that, that comes in. So there's no guarantee, just like the paper says, there's no guarantee.
All right.
But chances are, history shows, it's gonna be less than National Grid.
These were done, these were done about a month ago, these bids, right?
I think what she's trying to ask is, would this, would you actually extend the current rates if the rates that, when the contract ends, if the current, if the existing out rate out that National Grid is charging is like thirty-three cents, but let's say we have, I don't know, seventeen cents, whatever? Is that, is that, how would that work? I mean, would you, or would we be bidding somewhere between the two?
Normally, normally with these contracts, we go out for a competitive bid at each contract renewal. We did tell the Charlton, Millbury, Oxford aggregation. We only put them out for twenty-four months because we said to them, hey, you know what? Twenty-four months, thirty-six months actually looked a little better. But we said, look, maybe things will change in a year, and maybe we can do a blend and extend for that contract, okay? That was one of our options for, for this particular bid. But essentially, you wanna, the, the DPU wants to see you go out for a competitive bid at the end of each contract.
Have you ever had somebody who came forward and instead of just having the one or two communities, maybe tried pulling all twenty-five or something of your, of your communities into one large bid?
Well, we do that, yeah, that's what we do, yeah. We, we have, we have twenty-five communities that do a bid at the same time.
Oh.
And it's, it's a very interesting process because we get everybody in the same room, we lock all the doors. And we get the bids, and everybody has to sign a contract right there. I mean, there's, there's like, you know, you gotta sign a contract within, within the hour to get this back to the supplier, okay? But it's, again, we're, we're, with, with that group, we're on our third renewal. So it's, you know, they, they, they know we're, we're good.
How about the other, the, the towns that you serve that are not in that twenty-five?
Well, we have, we have some that go out together, like, like these, these six just went out together. Even though they're in, in different parts of the, the Commonwealth. But they all decided, let's just do it together, okay? So they did that.
Okay.
Now, there are some towns, like these towns up top, Arlington, Brookline, Medford, Somerville, Winchester. They're all big enough that they're out by themselves. But they can always, they can always join another group if they want to, if we have a situation where everybody's renewing, renewing at the same time.
Timing, it's all about timing.
I had a meeting this afternoon with a town and, and the town administrator said to me, well, look, what, you know, we're by ourselves, can we go out with somebody else? I said, you know, we're talking to another eight communities, and if we, we're all on the same path, and at the time it comes out to bid, you wanna go out to bid with somebody else, you could do that. But essentially, each town is you, is autonomous. You have your own plan, okay? You have your own decision-making. If you get together with, with other communities and you wanna bid together, that's fine, but you don't have to.
Okay.
Way back when, when Martina asked a question, I'd try to answer, but we do the same thing for the town side, and actually, the next agenda item is that, actually, because I'm asking for a range of up to forty-eight months, and I work with a consultant, I work town side, just like John's doing on behalf of the municipal residents. And we get a range, and we look at exactly what he's saying, you know? Is it more advantageous to go twelve months out, thirty-six, forty-eight? And looking at different patterns and what things they're selling for. And to, to Counselor Steve's point, like with the trash right now, there is a, a central Massachusetts solid waste contract that people look at for tipping. We can't get on that right now, it's got a few more years to go. But these are the types of things, you try and look for economies of scale, you know, whatever type of utility or service that you're doing. So we're doing the same thing to buy the town hall energy, and that's the next agenda item, as John's doing in this sense for getting the residents. So it's a similar philosophy of looking, even though it's thirty-three cents right now, that's not the rate we're looking at. We're looking at a coterminous contract when ours expires in about June. We're looking now, and we're trying to decide when the time is right. Looking anywhere from eighteen months up to forty-eight months, just that flexibility. If, you know, we look at trends, if it's going down or up, we might get longer, shorter, and so that's what he would do.
And, and certainly here in Massachusetts and, and the New England grid, natural gas prices are a precursor to what electricity prices will be. And I don't know whether you've noticed this, but the last two weeks, there's been an absolute crash in natural gas prices. So it's a very good time to go out to bid now or within the next month. Because it, most of what is, is generated here in Massachusetts and, and the New England grid is on natural gas, okay? Natural gas and nuclear together, every day, they combine to generate, right now, real time, forty-nine percent is being generated by natural gas, another twenty-seven percent by nuclear. So together, you're talking about eighty-six percent, seventy-six percent of, of the energy generated for electricity here in Massachusetts and, and the New England grid is, is by these, these two generators, natural gas and nuclear.
So I'm curious, now you talk about National Grid handles the billing and all those wonderful fees they tap on for billing and all kinds of whatever they do.
Have you ever really looked at those?
It's horrendous. This, it's kind of a joke as to what your usage is and what you actually pay because your, your supply is just not even, what they're doing, that's where, where some regulation there. It should not be that expensive, but that's okay. So my, my question is, if you say National Grid is still responsible for everything, even though you have this other supplier, did you know, like, will National Grid still do like home audits for you, that type of stuff?
Absolutely.
So regardless?
That's all, you're paying for that.
That's part of that whole.
You're paying for that and that, and that list of the delivery charges, if you notice? Energy efficiency?
Right, right.
Okay?
But so they'll still do that type of thing? I wondered about that in general.
They, they will refer you to a mass safe contractor to do those audits?
Yeah, I was just curious if they still, or on a, you know, somebody else?
Yeah, you're, you're, and, and anybody who's on a, a discounted program of any kind with National Grid, that still stays in place.
Interesting. So the only thing I, you know, it's unfortunate that we're sort of coming in at a time when it's like we're, we're making a decision that will ultimately be good, it sounds like. But it's unfortunate that the timeline is just so far out there, when now is when the, the issue is at hand, so. That would be my only, the downfall. I like the idea that there's an opt-out or opt-in, as the case might be, for some of us who might have opted into long range. Although the numbers, when I look at what you did with Charlton, I mean, not Charlton, but the, the sec, the launches, some of the numbers that were offered recently aren't, aren't too far from there, so it's at least for those who've gotten locked in for a little bit.
It's very interesting that you ever want, you ever wanna see what's being offered in town, you can go to the energieswitchma.gov site, and you can see all of the offers that are, that DPU allows in, in the town of Sanford.
The contractual applications, the in-out costs, the months, yeah, the fixed, the fixed plan, yeah. Yep. Good, okay.
Any other questions?
We don't, this was set up as a presentation meant to discuss and review the aggregation potential for the town. Well, we can take any action thereon, so what?
I'd make the motion to recommend that council move forward with Good Energy on an electricity aggregation plan for Southbridge.
Second?
Just, just one question as a, as a, obviously, Counselor, I have no problem with what you were saying.
Sure.
But should we, should we look into some of the other aggregations too? 'Cause they are just one of the others. As, as we have celebrated out there, we're.
Two others.
Two others, yeah.
Yeah, it's Col, Col, it's Colonial Power and Peregrine Energy.
Right, thank you. I think we should go.
Who was the person that responded?
I mean, I know it's, I, I, and I appreciate that he's here, and I totally agree with that. And I know that he's been working with, I've seen him at Oxford and other times, some, some of the other towns that I've covered as a reporter. So, so I've seen them having their process work for some time now. And it does seem to work, it seems perfectly well, so.
It does, yeah. We, we make, we make sure it works well because we want long-term customers.
And I, I look at it that, you know, they've got a year of work ahead of them or whatever, hopefully less but more. And ultimately, then again, when you sign up, when you vote to move forward, there, then to move forward, there, then you said that, that they have to approve the rate that you, when you do the bid, they have to accept the bid, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So there's still that future safeguard, whatever you want to call it, that potentially you could still refuse or, because as we know, if you don't accept bids in this community, it's not legal. It doesn't move forward.
Are you going out to other ones? You're just going to stretch it out even further?
Over the last, over the last seven years, we've only had one town that didn't, didn't take the bid on the first try. We don't want to go out to bid unless we can get you a good rate. Because that doesn't make sense. Okay? Because the success of the program at launch has to look good to people. Okay? And again, this was a situation with a particular town. They were just, you know, oh, could we get just a little more between that?
Less.
You know, well, a, a little more in terms of spread. Okay?
Okay.
But hey, you know, that, that's their choice to, to do that. Because, you know, we thought it was a good, good bid at the time. They didn't. So they said, okay, let's, let's wait. And four or five months down the road, we bid again. And they, they accepted it. So, you know.
But is there an obligation to accept a bid at some point?
No, never an obligation.
So in other words, there could be a time when the town said.
Not accepting bids. But we would not bring up a bid unless we thought you would accept.
Right, but I, I guess, what's the out? It's the town votes to go forward. You guys put a lot of energy, effort, time, money, so to speak, you know, your, to do this. What happens if there's no success at the end? Is there an obligation to the town? Then you lose out. I just want to be really clear that we say that, you know, that people, that you realize that, yeah.
That, that's the risk that we take.
Right, the risk is on you.
It's the business risk we take.
Okay, just want to be clear.
That's why we have to perform very well to make sure that we launch programs.
Right, okay.
And just going back to Gus's point, the other companies, how many towns do you have that you've serviced compared to Colonial Power?
Okay, there are, there are 175 towns that have approved plans. We have 59 clients right now. We have another eight in, in the mix that we're talking to. Peregrine has about 27, 28. Colonial has the most, but Colonial has many, many small towns in western Massachusetts. So they have the most towns. I'm not sure they have the most actual accounts. Because they have some towns with five, six, 700 households. And the way, the way the legal situation has become with DPU, we don't even market to the western four, four towns of Massachusetts because the towns are too small. We'd be losing money on legal fees. I don't know, I, I, their, their lawyer must be somebody's brother-in-law because it's like, you know? It's like crazy. You can't, you just can't, you know, they won't, they won't be recovering those costs until the third or fourth renewal. And that's, you know, that's like crazy. We're not recording this, are we? No, we are.
We could talk to them.
That's just my opinion.
For entertainment purposes only.
Okay, but anyway, now, you know, we, we can, obviously, we consider ourselves the best. We are the national leader. The advantage we have over the, the two other competitors in this market is that we're in a national market and we have a large commercial and industrial clientele. So we're always in the market. We know what the market is. The others just concentrate on aggregation. So there's, there's a big difference in the way our knowledge of the market. Let's, let's put it that way.
Do you do any aggregation for the cities? Do you do any aggregation for the cities, like Worcester, Boston, Springfield? But most of the towns, you're talking about relative to the mid-sized towns.
Boston is Colonial. Worcester is Peregrine. Okay? I don't want to comment on, on why those two things exist, but anyway.
Gus, I have a question. Do businesses also opt into this? Businesses in here in town? Or is it just for households?
Small businesses, G1 accounts. Okay? G2 accounts, basically, it's at the, the behest of the supplier, whether they'll accept those accounts or not. But small business and residential accounts, small business being G1s, okay?
I mean, there are numerous large businesses that are in an aggregate type of, or consortium aggregate, whatever type of.
Most, most of.
Together.
Most of your larger businesses have already been doing this bidding their own electricity for years. So, you know, it's inconsequential for them to, to be part of this situation.
And some of them probably use so much energy, they're the equivalent of a town anyway.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Anything else? Yeah, everybody has my card. You have any questions, I'm always available. Okay, I'm usually up by five in the morning and up at the pit by 11 at night.
Could you have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Do you want your practical?
No, no, you can give it.
I live with Gus, so I don't look at it.
You can have another one?
It's not good to, you could probably give extras to the town office so that they'll have it.
Have a good night, all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have, there's a few copies up in the manager's office, thanks, or so people can see it.
Item number six, discuss and review the town manager's request to negotiate pricing with competitive energy services. To enter into a contract with the town for the town's electricity supply for up to 48 months.
So if you recall, we came in, in the last year, using the same consultant slash analyst to get natural gas prices and we locked in at a pretty good rate. Right around the time of the Ukrainian invasion by Russia. And we locked in a pretty favorable rate at that time. As you heard John say, right now is probably a good time to be locking in your electricity. The one I used to say consultant and have the same level of flexibility so that we could come back with a matrix for you folks looking at, you know, what's the best to lock in right now, two months, I mean, excuse me, two years, three years, four years, and at, you know, at the best rates that are out there. So it just gives us some bandwidth. We did the same exact thing when we went out for the national gas contract.
Right.
How long was that contract?
I think the other one was about 36 months. So far, we've been doing well relative to the prices that have been out there.
Okay, how long do you figure it'll take to do this?
Our, I want to say our electricity contract expires in June, but he said we can probably lock in, start one as of June. But he just suggested I get the authority because as John said, things are changing. We're having a warmer winter, prices are coming down, which may affect our energy, electricity prices. So we would want to jump. So between now and June, we'll be trying to lock in.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out originally the, the table that we have.
That's just the, the numbers that he gave the last time we spoke as to what, what we're looking at, pricing-wise. We don't have it printed out.
We'll check on it.
But I would come back and let the council know what we get for a rate.
And they're doing this, is there a fee to this?
The same way that John and the manager makes, they get, whomever they get a bid, they get a sum amount.
Do you need a motion?
So basically, no cost to the town.
I'll move that, and I have the, the language, so.
Okay.
My printer wanted to print absolutely everything.
Ah, yes, I asked Hannah to print mine out. I think it did.
She gets a pair.
Okay.
Well, you have to make sure for yourself.
Yeah. Discuss the town manager's request to enter into, I move that the manager be allowed to negotiate with competitive energy services to enter into contract for the town's electric supply for up to 48 months at a low fixed rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further questions? All those in favor? Ah, number seven, discuss and review transfer requests for $13,185.46 from Town Council Reserve to sick vacation buyback to cover the cost of the town manager's vacation payment. Editor, and, okay, comments, questions? Do you have a motion? Mr. Manager, you want to say about this?
It's being forwarded by the treasurer in the account. Under my contract, way it works, it says in there that I get paid for my unused vacations. And what happens, I'm allowed to carry it over. I was given 20 days when I first started and then on each anniversary, an additional 20 days for six, total of 60. And I've used about a third of that in my time here and take off a lot. So that's what's left.
Thanks. So we don't, I don't, I wish we had finance people here to ask questions too. So your, on, your sick vacation, that's all based on your salary, correct? Like there's some sort of hourly rate put to that or some daily rate put to that, correct?
Yes, it's, actually, it's not any sit-down. I don't get that in the contract.
Okay, so it's just vacation payback, vacation payout?
For some time.
The vacation is earned or it's what you're given yearly in your, or whatever, in your contract?
I'm giving it yearly. So they gave me 20 days, the day they started. And then on my one-year anniversary, I get another 20 and then another 12. So it's not accrued, it's, it's just there.
Okay, but so, and that vacation time is based on a full year, correct? A full year of employment? You got, but you were given that vacation time when you started?
Yes.
They deposit it?
Yeah.
And then on your anniversary, they deposit the next year? And on your anniversary, they deposit the next year?
Yes, that's how they do it for all town employees.
I understand, I understand. So you are leaving in less than your year, correct? Your anniversary is not for the fall, isn't it? Something about the fall?
Yeah, but I don't accrue it on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis.
I understand that, but I'm just making a point. And generally, you and I get along and I'll, I just have some very strong, I hate to say the word negative, but negative feelings on things in regard to how your employment's been handled, that you received a raise.
I'm order, this is about his payback.
Right, but it's about the money. You're asking us to recommend that council.
No, it's irrelevant to this discussion. This is influenced by the EA. Town Council and the treasurer has nothing to do with what you have issues with me about. They put that forward.
Okay, but I can, I, I think for transparency to the, to the community, I have the right to have a comment about whether, you know, that's great that you get vacation buyback. But it's still, in the manner in which things have, have played out in the last year, I have a problem with it. I, obviously, if it's a legal situation, we have to cover it. The town has to cover it. Therefore, it'll have to get voted and they're going to have to pay it. There's no doubt.
Yeah.
Just doesn't mean that we have to like it, or not like it, I guess. But when I look at the amount of what it is, we're, we're transferring 13, but the reality of the payout is, is much more than 13. So.
We need to, we need to change the kind, the way the contract is written.
That's a whole nother discussion. Correct, correct. So it may be due you, but I'm just, like many people do at these meetings, saying how I feel about this particular item. So I have no problem making a motion to make, to, for this transfer. It has to be done. It's a legal matter. And I would make the motion, recommend that the council do the transfer in order, unless there's some other way to get the money, transfer it from council reserves, you know, from the count number of council reserves to the sick vacation buyback situation. And that's what it is? I mean, just.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I would just say there, she, she gets to it.
Okay.
But I would also add that, you know, a lot of people don't, may not understand. You get that at the beginning of a work year. You get that. So, you know, people need to understand that. So going forward, maybe there's, there's better contracts or, or that are more faithful to the town. That's all. And I know MNA has standard contracts. I don't agree with MNA's standard contract. And that's, that's on tape. Look, pass it. So.
Did you have a comment? No?
No, I mean.
Hand it over.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I mean, it's, if it's in the contract and our treasurer is recommending, you know, taking it out of this particular account. You know, in the past, she's done her due diligence to let us know what accounts, you know, are best to transfer money from. So I would, I don't see that we have a choice.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So move. Well, I'll move for that one. Push the button.
This one, it's a comment. It's not a deal, but the last meeting postponed. Your agenda item, and it's not on tonight's agenda. It's okay. Well, you can send it to the next, it was about the.
Can we go back into session if we're going?
Well, we have, we have, there's a motion, but it hasn't been voted on. So you can withdraw, you can withdraw the motion.
The cabinet committee changed the useful life of.
Oh, right, thank you, thank you, okay.
Whoever, if you want to wait, that's fine. You don't have to edit tonight. It's just that you postponed it to tonight.
Okay, I have it tonight.
It's, no, it's not on the agenda, but I, I had totally forgotten that. Thanks.
I didn't even notice it when I got.
Are you insured or not?
No, we're back in.
I just wanted to make sure the cameras.
It's still.
I didn't, honestly, I didn't need it. So, okay.
Can I ask a question though, by the way? When I was reading this and it, and the minutes, and I saw the agenda item, but I swear, was it not on the council on Mondays?
We did, we postponed it, sent it back to agenda.
I said, why did it get on council?
It shouldn't have been. That was, that was actually my fault because I had forgotten to, when, when Hannah was asking what we had approved, I, I didn't have my notes in front of me. So I said, I, I said that we, I thought we had approved everything. I had forgotten about that item. So she put it on the agenda and then during the meeting, I said, oh, which, I had forgotten about this.
Yeah.
So we sent it back to agenda.
Well, it's getting kind of late. If you want to talk about it, I'll talk about it. But if you want to wait till the next meeting, that's fine.
Well, I think.
Because we just said in January, right? What was it, um?
It's not on the agenda. But you're, but you're right, we do need to deal with it, so.
It's right, because we postponed it to the next GG, right? And unfortunately, then, then I asked about having the next GG and we didn't.
That's right.
Remember that?
Nothing's coming up.
And then I got a notice. I said, we have a meeting.
Yeah.
So speaking of which, then should, is there anything else? I mean, I know the town manager had said there were some other things coming up, potentially, anyway. I am going to be, so, yeah, and I'm away the second, so in two weeks, on like the third, on the 31st perhaps, or?
We could try, we could do 31st, maybe.
31st.
Is coming down the pipe that we need?
No, the only thing that I thought we were going to have come down is going to be, it was a, the fire station talked about a catwalk plan similar to the one in Charlton, but I haven't heard anything further from them. And I had to leave that.
I agree with that.
So anyway, just saying, if you're looking, I happen to be away the week after for, for business. So I'll be gone on, after that. So if he was trying, if we're trying to get it in in January, this was my, because let's see, council was just.
We could do 30th through 31st.
Council's going to be what, the 23rd?
Yep.
So then it's going to be on the 6th. So if, if you did something on the 30th or in that week, then it would, it could go potentially.
It could. Well, or we could do it the week of the 24th, the 23rd, next week, if you want. Doesn't matter to me, I don't want, but.
Well, there's already, let's see, not a meeting on Thursday.
Yes, a trash meeting on Thursday. Council's on Monday.
Oh, there's a trash Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with the town manager's search committee meeting on Thursday.
Oh, it is?
Isn't that at nine, isn't that at six or something?
Yep.
That's at six, that's at the same time as the trash meeting.
Interesting.
Hundred percent of the year next day.
Right.
Well, it, it's up to you, I could do Monday or Tuesday, Monday, I mean, Tuesday or Wednesday. Because Monday's a council meeting.
So, so you're thinking twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, thirtieth?
If I had to, yeah.
So what do you guys think?
I can't do the twenty-fifth.
No, okay, okay. But I can do either of them, so.
If that's going to be the only agenda item, it would just be council. I guess, do you have more that you wanted to present on that as far as technology or anything else? Can we do the thirty-first?
It's just a technical.
Denise, are you going to be, can we do the thirty-first?
Yes.
What about you?
I'm okay until the February.
Right, yeah, February becomes, February, March, there's some, I mean, there's some weird stuff.
Yes, things get weird in February, but the rest of January looks good.
Okay, yeah.
So you want to do thirty-first then?
Yeah.
That works, that's fair.
What, thirty-first?
Also, I mean, I guess if we're, if we're looking to, I'm trying to think, what's some of the concern of John Paul C.
I remember.
Was it, we did, was Karen with us that night?
For.
In general, yeah, she was, and Karen had, they're compiling a list of assets. Oh, that's what it was.
Oh, that's right, right.
That's right, that's right.
The CVC and Karen were compiling.
We're trying to figure out how many trucks the school department had.
Oh, but that wasn't, I mean, this was not a capital plan though. This was under the capital.
Right, and the other note that I had was about this, this storage sewer IMA. Is that coming down the pipeline?
I am, the town administrator, Robin Grimm, said that they were wrapping it up with their council and then they were going to send us, send us a draft for review. We've had the same one in place, it's expiring, and then it goes year to year. And there is a, that's how it currently works. It's going to go year to year. And there's also a three-year notice provision before you can get out. So we're going to be, I'm stuck with the status quo, but they're proposing, they want to propose a five-year deal. So it'll be interesting to see. There'll be no other substantial changes, but it's just they want to shorten the term because they're still trying to decide what they want to do.
So would that be better to do that here or in executive session for council?
I'll have to wait because I think the other sticky part about that is we both have KP law.
Yeah.
And they said they may go get outside council. And if we, if they bring us something, KP law gave up first to a third party and then covering the changes in the fee, but I'll wait to see. I would imagine any discussion of the details, well, let me think. I'm not sure if you can do a contract like that in executive session. It's not in the contract. Yeah, it's going to be out.
But it's, but would it involve in negotiations, exceptions?
I'd have to look, I'd have to look back because those contracts.
We did the water IMA in a public meeting in Charlton before. I remember being in public, well, those of us who we, I attended with, at the time, council across from council, as members, but it was a public, it wasn't a private event.
I think they have to be open, it's not, I don't think it falls under the exemption. I'll have to check.
Okay.
But my only concern is, so the reason we postponed it was in the discussion going from ten to three, ten to five, but every, there was concern about technology and there being some sort of, so I guess if we're going to bring it back, there, there needs to be that language, there needs to be something coming back to us and, or for any of that concern, council or county, you know, like.
Did you want me to talk to her or go? And I think I can legally settle it right now.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we can legally settle it on that.
Yeah, I think we can.
At the moment, we're trying to.
Yeah, we're just, I'm just saying what we need to, to do, we, you know.
Okay.
So if there was, if there was anything different that anybody wanted in it, it needed to come.
We need to have something.
All right.
So just bring that, bring, yeah, if that was indeed an issue that we talked about, because it's in the minutes, that's why I say it, then just bring that or have that as the agenda item, you know? And I leave that up to the chairman because it's his, you know, he's supposed to make sure that whatever we were.
You can start that with number one.
It's not my job, I'm just reminding you, that's all.
Right.
It's not my, not my, not my business. All right, so.
Okay, so, so we'll do it, would be six or six-thirty for the first. Any preference?
You, you sometimes have.
On the thirty-first.
Yeah, what's your?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay. Normally, that's better for me too, but we're contracting in a very, very popular wake-up and moisture. Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion again.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, all those in favor?[1797.52]